Opioide dependencia puede ocurrir como resultado de uso de medicamentos de prescripción legítima. Pero hay una diferencia entre dependencia y adicción. Ambos pueden requerir ayuda médica y apoyo para recuperarse. No estás solo y hay esperanza. Para aprender más, ven a verme. Soy Rushney Vereen y estoy viviendo la prueba de que la recuperación es posible. Y soy un profesor de coaching de recuperación para la ciudad de Waterbury.
Buenas tardes a todos y bienvenidos a esta reunión de trabajo del comité de educación de Waterbury para la reunión de jueves, octubre, quiero decir, el 5 de agosto de 2021. Esta es una reunión virtual a través de Zoom Technologies. Nuestro primer elemento de agenda para esta noche es la oración silenciosa. Dr. Ruffin, ¿tienes algo que quieres poner en la oración silenciosa antes de que empiece?
No, nada específico para esta noche, Comisionada.
Muchas gracias, Dr. Ruffin. El siguiente elemento de agenda es el juramento de lealtad hacia la bandera. Comisionada Juanita Hernández, ¿te gustaría ser tan amable y llevarnos en el juramento?
Gracias. Gracias, querida. Me pido lealtad a la bandera.
Muchas gracias, Comisionada Hernández.
Gracias.
El siguiente elemento de agenda es la discusión pública. ¿Tiene algunos llamadores?
Sí, tenemos un llamador, Robert Goodrich. Por favor, indique su nombre y dirección para el registro.
Mi nombre es Robert Goodrich, 14 Stanrod Avenida, Waterbury, Connecticut. Buenas tardes, Presidente Pagano y Vicepresidente Harvard. En 2020, en 2021, el Congreso aprobó tres presupuestos de stimulación que proporcionaban casi 190 billones al fondo de emergencia de la escuela primaria y secundaria de la escuela. Estos fondos son para apoyar la sostenibilidad y la reabertura de las escuelas mientras expanden oportunidades para estudiantes disproporcionalmente afectados por COVID-19, enfatizando que los estudiantes que son negros, latinos, LGBTQI+, estudiantes de lenguaje inglés y estudiantes de género diferente y sus familias deben ser apoyados. Queremos reconocer el trabajo duro y la dedicación del personal escolar que ha llevado a través de la pandemia nuestro distrito e invitamos a que aumenten su colaboración con la comunidad. En la primavera de septiembre, Race aprendió sobre las opciones de financiación para ESR-2 y estuvimos inmediatamente preocupados por las decisiones de gastar millones de dólares en la mejora de las edificios escolares en lugar de hacer grandes inversiones dedicadas que impactarían a generaciones de estudiantes. De profundidad en nuestros preocupaciones con la falta de consultas significativas que formularon sus planes anteriores y la completa falta de reuniones públicas llevadas a cabo por el distrito para recopilar la entrada de la comunidad requerida por el Plan de Rescate Americano. Ahora, el distrito debe hacerlo mejor o arriesgar el riesgo de violar las provisiones regulatorias insertadas en nuestra legislación federal, pero lo más importante es que si eligen ignorar estas responsabilidades básicas, se desestimaran a estudiantes de color. Ahora, hemos tenido numerosas reuniones de uno a uno, colaborando con otras organizaciones de la comunidad, consultando expertos en política educativa, así como a los padres, pero lo más importante es que hemos tenido sesiones de escucha con estudiantes que asisten a las escuelas públicas de Waterbury para agregar significativamente la consulta requerida por ARF. Ahora, desde mayo, Race ha convenido tres reuniones de pueblo centradas en estudiantes y padres y defensores locales. Creemos que tenemos el pulso de la comunidad y ahora tenemos la consulta requerida por ARF que guiará al distrito en adherirse a su propia política de equidad y el mandato del Departamento de Educación de Estado requiriendo que el financiamiento sea usado para apoyar las prioridades del distrito determinadas por un plano de equidad. Ahora, aquí están algunas de nuestras recomendaciones. Uno, proveer a la clase de graduados de 2020 y 2021 con un cheque de estímulo de calificación y preparación universitaria de 2,500 dólares por pie. Investigar en transformar la participación de los padres para asegurar que la voz del padre está evidente en todas las decisiones basadas en escuelas al asignar 2,500 dólares por año a 200 padres que están motivados a participar en la cumbre de gobernanza escolar. Investigar en seguridad y seguridad y en los sentimientos de unidad para los estudiantes LGBTQ+ por financiar totalmente acceso a los bares neutrales generales en cada escuela. Trabajo y apoyo para todo el personal escolar basado en sus deberes profesionales y financiar completamente el club de estudiantes LGBTQ+ para que esos estudiantes sean recurridos adecuadamente. Investigar en establecer y luego en crecer relaciones cross-cultural entre educadores y estudiantes al asignar 3 millones de dólares para comprar libros y materiales literarios culturalmente sustentables en cada escuela para cada estudiante. Investigar en construir edificios y campus culturalmente responsables de las escuelas y campus al asignar 6 millones de dólares para rediseñar y construir edificios actuales para reflejar las culturas y identidades de los estudiantes y familias que los asisten. Eliminar la lista de espera para los nuevos cursos de historia de la historia negra y latín al asignar más financiamiento para más educadores, más materiales de curso y más herramientas de aprendizaje. Y invertir en programación de mentoría basada en la comunidad que proporciona acceso a diademas basados en la identidad para cada escuela secundaria y primaria. Ahora, emitiremos nuestro plan completado el 11 de agosto al Superintendente y al Departamento de Educación de Estado para asegurar que esta consulta significativa esté considerada en consideración. Enviamos esta comunicación a ustedes todos esta noche y esperamos y esperamos que contribuirán a nuestro plan en lo que estés interesado en obtener la consulta significativa de las comunidades que sirven. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Sr. Goodrich. ¿Hay otros llamados en la línea, Carrie?
No.
Bien, muchas gracias. El siguiente elemento de agenda es una presentación del Collaborative Slam. Sr. Will Zuda es el interfaz. Sr. Zuda, el cuarto es tuyo.
Gracias. Creo que Slam está en el campo y Kemp, veo que están en él. Slam ha entrado en acuerdo para un estudio de instalaciones de infraestructura a largo plazo. Los servicios profesionales incluirán hacer y analizar nuestra proyección de adquisición de la escuela, nuestros tendores de población y demográficas de pronóstico para los próximos 10 años. Se llamarán a hacer una evaluación de necesidades comprensivas y programática para cumplir con las prioridades programáticas identificadas en el Plan Strategic de Waterbury y consistentes con la visión, misión, visión, valores fundamentales adoptados por el Consejo de Educación. Se llamarán a examinar todas las instalaciones escolares, recursos y infraestructura tecnológica con respecto a las condiciones y capacidades actuales y futuras. Consideran diversas opciones para grados y agrupaciones educacionales geográficas, configuración y organizaciones, y preparar un plan de instalaciones con prioridades identificadas para reparación, renovación, reconstrucción o consolidación de los centros físicos del distrito, incluyendo mecánica mayor. Kemp y Phil están en él y nos proporcionarán la presentación para todo el Consejo.
Gracias. Señores, el cuarto es tuyo.
Bien, gracias. Buenas tardes. Voy a compartir mi pantalla. Y lo que he obtenido es un extracto de nuestra presentación en junio al Comité de Selección. ¿Todos pueden ver eso?
Sí.
Así que vamos a tratar de mantener nuestra presentación a cerca de 12 a 15 minutos o así. Podemos ir por algunas de estas diapositivas relativamente rápidamente. Si quieren que dejemos algo y tengamos algún comentario, estamos contentos de hacerlo o podemos guardar preguntas para el final. Conmigo esta noche es Mo. Primero de todo, mi nombre es Kemp Morehart y estoy con el Collaborative Slam. Soy director de la empresa. He hecho varios proyectos en la ciudad de Waterbury durante los años. Realmente contento de estar trabajando contigo de nuevo en este proyecto. Conmigo esta noche es Kristen Furtak, también del Collaborative Slam y Phil Conte de Studio Jade. Y voy a pasar por sus roles respectivos en un momento. Avance. Bien, no parece estar cooperando conmigo. Salto al modo de pantalla completo. Espero que todavía puedas ver la pantalla relativamente bien. Voy a avanzar de esta manera. Así que el estudio se ha dividido en cuatro componentes principales. Las demográficas y proyecciones de adquisición, lo que llamamos parte A. Parte B son prioridades curriculares y programáticas. Parte C son condiciones de instalación, capacidad y utilización. Y luego la parte final es planificación de instalaciones y mejores alternativas de uso. Nuestra equipo, con nosotros hoy, como mencioné, es mi propio, Kristen y Phil Conte. También parte de nuestra equipo es Michael Zubba, que será el que dirige el componente de demográficas y proyecciones de adquisición, así como Nick D'Agostino de D'Agostino Associates, que será responsable de la evaluación de la tecnología en todo el distrito, así como algunos otros en nuestra empresa para estimar el costo y experiencia técnica en el lado arquitectónico y del plan. Solo un rápido resumen de Slam. Slam es una empresa arquitectónica de 270 personas. Nos centramos en Glastonbury, para aquellos de ustedes que no conocen. Hemos hecho varios proyectos escolares en la ciudad, Gil Martin y Career Academy siendo dos, entre otros proyectos. Tenemos bastante experiencia haciendo planes de master de 12 en Connecticut y la región de Nueva England. Así que traemos esa experiencia al table. El proceso se ha dividido en lo que me gusta llamar descubrimiento y entrega. Así que el lado izquierdo de la pantalla, el elemento 1 y 2, es realmente donde comenzamos a recolectar toda la información. Hacemos nuestra recolección de datos y trabajamos con ustedes para visualizar dónde quieren ir en el futuro. Identificamos la evaluación de necesidades en cuanto a programas, requisitos de espacio, estrategias de planificación de sitios y benchmarkar eso contra otros distritos en el estado. Luego tomamos toda esa información y comenzamos a desarrollar opciones para la mejor utilización de instalaciones. Y eso se convierte en el lado derecho de la pantalla. Una vez que trabajamos con ustedes para desarrollar opciones, luego pondremos estimaciones de costes juntos y estrategias de implementación de cómo mejor facilitar esos planes para el futuro. Esto culminará en un informe de evaluación de instalaciones escrito que puedes tener para usar en el futuro. Solo un poco de un breakdown de cómo, quién de nuestra equipo está haciendo los diferentes componentes. Slam siendo el líder. Seremos responsables y participaremos en todos los componentes del trabajo. SLR es responsable de demográficas y proyecciones de adquisición, así como evaluaciones de sitios. Studio Jade tomará el liderazgo en la evaluación de condiciones de instalaciones. Y Slam tomará el liderazgo en la evaluación de instalaciones y capacidad y utilización. Y como mencioné, D'Agostino en tecnología. Y luego todo el equipo estará involucrado en el componente de planificación de master. Algunos desafíos clave que vemos con este proyecto, solo recolectar los datos es siempre una gran subida. Así que trabajaremos directamente con el personal escolar y el personal administrativo en toda la ciudad, obteniendo acceso a las escuelas. Estaremos trabajando con las instalaciones del distrito para asegurarnos de que podamos obtener acceso a todas las instalaciones para hacer nuestras evaluaciones de campo. Proyecciones de adquisición, trabajando con los datos del centro de intake para recoger esa evaluación o recoger esa información para poder producir la evaluación durante los próximos cinco a diez años, entendiendo grupos de revitalización de la ciudadanía. Y luego ganar o construir consenso entre las agencias de la ciudad y el Consejo de Educación. Es algo en lo que estamos muy dispuestos y construir ese consenso entre esos diversos intereses es un desafío, pero no es nada que no hayamos hecho antes. Entendemos que, ya sabes, un proyecto de este tamaño y complejidad involucra a un par de diferentes intereses durante toda la ciudad. Y todos, cada uno de esos intereses tiene sus propios intereses en el resultado del proyecto y trabajaremos juntos para reunirlos todos juntos en un informe comprensivo. Voy a saltar por esto. Esta es solo una forma de manejar el proceso. Desarrollamos un plan de trabajo detallado. Y así cuando trabajamos con el grupo de trabajo establecido por el oficio de Superintendente, identificaremos decisiones que necesitamos del grupo en advance para que podamos mover este proyecto hacia adelante de una manera muy eficiente. Mirando el horario, este es un horario que fue presentado en junio, así que es un poco actualizado. Han comenzado con, indicaron un inicio de junio, pero más probablemente serán comienzo de agosto en este proceso, pero en general vemos que el proceso toma aproximadamente ocho a nueve meses. Los primeros tres a cuatro son el componente de recolección de datos y solo la evaluación de todas las instalaciones, la evaluación de la capacidad y la utilización y hacer las proyecciones de adquisición. Y luego la parte posterior del proyecto es el componente de planificación y participación de la comunidad, participación del Consejo de Educación en el plan y así sucesivamente. Siempre estamos buscando maximizar la reembolso durante este proceso. Estamos muy bien dispuestos en el Oficio de Construcción de Escuelas de la Ciudad y revisión. Y los, la reembolso de la ciudad de Waterbury está aquí. Así que mientras desarrollamos opciones, siempre estamos atentos a maximizar esa reembolso en nuestras opciones propuestas. Phil va a hablar un poco sobre la evaluación de la planta física y el proceso que pasan por. Phil.
Genial, gracias, Kemp. Buenas tardes a todos. Así que Studio Jade es una empresa de arquitectura y ingeniería. También especializamos en evaluaciones de condiciones de instalaciones. Lo hemos completado en 23 estados y en todo Canadá. Más de 500 millones de metros cuadrados de evaluaciones. Así que somos muy familiarizados con el proceso de recolección de datos. Hemos desarrollado nuestro propio instrumento de recolección, que es una base de datos de acceso a Microsoft, que nos permite recolectar los datos en el campo, customizar el reporte para ti y luego exportar ese dato de vuelta a ti en Excel para tu uso futuro y planificación. Siguiente diapositiva, Kemp. Esta es una captura de solo una página de un informe. Somos dos tercios completos de la evaluación de la escuela pública de Stanford. Esto sucede ser solo un informe que podemos generar, que customizamos a tus necesidades particulares. Pero lo que quería mostrar aquí es que muy simplemente, un grupo que puede no estar familiarizado con la construcción puede determinar rápidamente cuáles son las necesidades de alta prioridad de una particular instalación. Esto sucede ser una escuela dentro del sistema de escuelas públicas de Stanford y puedes ver rápidamente que en la columna de la derecha derecha, la mayor necesidad suele ser el sistema HVAC, el sistema de aire acondicionamiento y ventilación. Así que mientras vas a través del proceso de planificación, este dato te muestra rápidamente que esta escuela en gran necesidad de una inversión significativa en el sistema HVAC. Segundo, son los acabos interiores de casi 5 millones de dólares, lo que significa que esta escuela puede ser candidata para algunos mejoranzas curriculares o reprogramación. Así que puedes tomar una decisión más informada, por ejemplo, bueno, ya que esta escuela necesita mucho trabajo, tal vez sea una buena candidata para invertir en "blanco", o tal vez esta escuela debido a las proyecciones de adquisición y la necesidad debería ser tomada offline. Ese es nuestro objetivo. Siguiente diapositiva, Kemp, es proporcionarte datos fiables, que están respaldados por muchos reportes que te permiten digerir esta información en lo que llamamos contenido de tamaño snack para que puedas tomar una decisión impulsada por los datos basada en la información. Y finalmente, lo que nos gustaría hacer en la siguiente diapositiva, Kemp, es, de acuerdo a como te guste verlo, presentar ese dato para ti para que tú, tus constituidores, la comunidad sean informados y tomen esa decisión, si está basado en una tabla o un gráfico de barra o un gráfico de pie que identifica posiblemente sistemas o prioridades o razones para las deficiencias. Ese es nuestro objetivo en apoyar este esfuerzo de planificación de master.
Gracias, Phil. Además de la evaluación de la construcción física que Studio Jade va a llevar, que incluirá arquitectura, MEP, sistemas estructurales, D'Agostino Associates también va a evaluar la tecnología y seguridad física para cada escuela, mirando principalmente estos diferentes sistemas dentro de cada edificio y ser capaz de predecir dónde pueden ser necesidades de infraestructura o para apoyar programas futuros. Además, también visitaremos cada sitio y harán una evaluación del exterior de cada escuela. Este es solo un breve ejemplo de cómo podría verse. 評估 parking, drive, sidewalks, presencia de campos, presencia de estructuras de play ground y así sucesivamente, para dar un inventario de lo que cada escuela tiene para los amenazas de sitio. Toda esta información se compilará en un informe comprensivo por escuela y luego será parte del informe de planificación general. Un componente clave del estudio son las demográficas y las proyecciones de adquisición. Mike Zubba típicamente presentaría estas diapositivas. Voy a hacer un resumen alto nivel basado en mi conocimiento, pero comienza trabajando con el distrito y obteniendo todos los datos pertinentes del Departamento de Salud Pública para datos de nacimiento live, así como datos de adquisición pasada del estado y del Consejo de Educación, entendiendo demográfica y datos de alojamiento de la oficina de planificación. Y luego desarrollan una proyección de tres niveles, bajo, medio y alto para tus proyecciones de adquisición, lo que es importante. Y luego hablamos con ustedes y trabajamos con ustedes para identificar cuál versión de esas proyecciones de adquisición todos sentimos como un grupo son la más apropiada para usar en el plan. Algunos de los motivos que se entienden a nivel distrito son historias de desarrollo y demográficas, tendas de alojamiento y tendas económicas y iniciativas de planificación y desarrollo. Y a nivel de la ciudadanía, ciertas tendas de adquisición, puedes ver que también desarrollamos lo que llamamos mapping GIS, el mapping de información geográfica. Cada estudiante se mapará y geolocará dentro de la ciudad para poder generar mapas como esta donde podemos identificar dónde reside la densidad de estudiantes, lo que informará lo que necesitamos para las instalaciones en ciertas ciudades. También miramos las condiciones de alojamiento local, ventas y comienzos donde puede ocurrir cierta inmigración y dónde pueden ocurrir desarrollos futuros. Y en esta diapositiva en particular, muestra áreas donde, en el verde, pueden ser nuevos parcelos sin construir dentro de la ciudad que podrían ser usados para el desarrollo y luego en el azul son los parcelos de redesarrollo. Y entonces, similarmente, analizando la adquisición y mirando las tendas, en esta diapositiva en particular, está mirando a los estudiantes de lenguaje inglés por metro cuadrado y es una especie de mapa de calor. Así que identifica dónde tenemos esos estudiantes que pueden ser bilingües y que puede ser un motor para un cierto tipo de programa o escuela. Sé que cuando trabajamos con la ciudad en 2015 en el estudio de la escuela primaria, ese fue un aspecto de ese estudio que miramos donde consideramos construir una escuela bilingüe debido a la alta densidad de estudiantes de lenguaje inglés en este cuadrado de la ciudad. Así que todo esto se junta y junto con la evaluación de condiciones de instalaciones, como Phil acaba de mencionar, y todo este recolección de datos se junta y informa el proceso de planificación. Y como mencioné, las proyecciones de adquisición son hechas a un nivel bajo, medio y alto. Y elegiremos la que mejor alinearse con el deseo de la ciudad para avanzar con el plan. Además de esto, Kristen va a hablar sobre la evaluación de capacidad y utilización que pasamos de cada escuela. Así que tenemos una capacidad funcional para cada escuela para servir como parte del proceso de planificación. Kristen.
Genial, gracias, Ken. Así que brevemente, como programador y planador, lo que hacemos es que vamos a pasar por todos los edificios, todas tus escuelas y realmente entender la capacidad y la utilización. Y estamos mirando cada espacio, desde los closets de la iglesia hasta los gimnasios hasta los aula y realmente entendiendo la capacidad de lo que cada escuela puede holder individualmente para tus estudiantes. Y este es solo un rápido ejemplo del nivel de grado que estamos viendo, el número de habitación, la fotografía cuadrada y la ocupancia actual para este ejemplo. Aquí, esto es una especie de resumen de cuando miramos todas las escuelas. Estos son, esto es el secundario, lo estamos breaking por el actual adquisición, la capacidad funcional, cuál es el límite del maestro por estudiante. Y esto es solo un resumen de toda la información que pudimos recoger. Estamos mirando el rango de grado y empezando a entender qué tiene cada escuela para ofertas más allá de los espacios académicos. Y esto fue parte del informe que hicimos para ustedes todos en 2015. Este fue un benchmark de Waterbury. Puedes ver aquí designado en ese azul bandera de 800 metros cuadrados. Y miramos cada escuela. En este ejemplo, era el secundario y el secundario.
Era el secundario y está representando el tamaño del aula promedio por grado por escuela relativo a ese benchmark de 800 metros cuadrados por aula.
Y puedes ver el rango de algunos caen realmente extremadamente abajo y algunos encima. Así que eso fue algo que queríamos analizar en todo el distrito.
Este es solo un ejemplo del tipo de datos que vamos a presentar a ustedes como parte del estudio para ayudar con esas decisiones.
Así que y más allá de un aula típica, aquí estamos mirando paridad en todo el distrito. Así que aquí debemos dividir, miramos las escuelas que tenían espacios para ofrecer arte y música y en algunos casos estaban haciendo música en sus aulas generales. Así que realmente queríamos entender en todo el distrito qué tenía cada escuela individualmente para ofertas, no solo lo que ofrecían, sino cuánto cuadrado de la fotografía fue asignado a eso. Y como comenzamos a mirar el plan de planificación, mirando si es una pequeña adición que podemos acomodar para agregar nuestro aula de clases a esas escuelas que estaban haciendo eso en sus aulas generales y realmente solo, ya sabes, digestando la información. Así que en las siguientes diapositivas te mostraremos las diferentes formas en que podemos entender gráficamente esa información. Así que aquí, el anterior era, ya sabes, un documento de Excel. Aquí estamos mirando cada uno de los planos de la planta, en color render que el rojo era su gimnasio, el azul es especial educación y realmente rápidamente obteniendo una comprensión gráfica de la paridad dentro del distrito para este ejemplo. Aquí es mirando la adquisición versus capacidad. Puedes ver, ya sabes, el rango de donde está el total de adquisición en la barra negra y dónde está el rango de lo que es por contrato, con el 85% de eficiencia en el azul y luego la capacidad de espacio al 85% en el rojo. Y puedes ver el distrito en el que la adquisición versus capacidad en este gráfico. Y es solo una forma diferente de capturar toda la información que nos proporcionarán dentro de ese informe. Y esto fue hecho en ese informe de 2015 que hicimos para Waterbury. Estoy aquí y aquí es solo un diferente, ya sabes, gráfico visual de realmente entender las escuelas, pero esto es bueno porque pone esas escuelas dentro de tu distrito con ese mapa y puedes ver rápidamente dónde están los sobres de estudiantes, sin entrar en el detalle de todo eso. Pero esto es solo una forma diferente en que podemos capturar mucha de esa información gráficamente, obteniendo una mejor comprensión de la ubicación de las escuelas dentro de tu distrito.
Y la capacidad o deficiencia de asientos.
Claro.
Gracias, Kristen. Puedes continuar.
Claro. Así que parte del planificación y programación, realmente miramos el plan estratégico que ustedes han establecido para el 2020, 2027 y realmente entendiendo tu visión y tu misión y realmente, ¿qué hace? Queremos asegurarnos de que estamos en paralelo con lo que ustedes están luchando por crear esos entornos que apoyen el crecimiento académico igual para ambos estudiantes y maestros fuera de tu distrito. Así que solo queríamos asegurarnos de que estamos en paralelo con los pensamientos y procesos que ustedes han creado para tu plan estratégico. Y esto solo captura algo de lo que nuestro proceso es. Realmente queremos involucrar a todos, no necesariamente solo en este llamado, sino realmente a todo el distrito, ya sabes, desde los maestros hasta el personal, incluso los estudiantes. Realmente investigamos mucha información con la ayuda de Studio Jade y SLR. Estamos empezando a analizar mucho de ese dato, realmente comparando la función, la dimensión de los espacios, el metro cuadrado por estudiante. Y luego comenzamos, una vez que obtengamos toda esa información, podemos realmente mirar el plan de las diferentes opciones, entendiendo las adjacencias entre cada edificio y repartiendo eso en el último informe que entregamos a ustedes. Y un pensamiento, y ahora me voy a mandar a Kemp porque sé que él tiene un comentario sobre esto, pero lo número uno que queremos hacer es asegurarnos de que estamos involucrados con todos los jugadores correctos. Y entendemos que con COVID, ha puesto un freno en el... COVID, it kind of has put a hold on the face to face interaction that we really like to be able to do with the district. But we've been able to utilize online surveys and really getting some feeders out there and being able to still capture a lot of input from the district just via surveys without that face to face interaction that we're looking for.
Thanks, Kristen. A few other I'm not sure what that was, but a few other things that to talk about with this slide are just how we engage with not only the Board of Ed during the planning process, but also the community. As, as Chris had mentioned, there are lots of tools that we've used prior to COVID, but with the advent of the COVID situation and virtual meetings, we've been able to further enhance those technologies such as mentimeter as the example in the middle of the screen here. Where we can do real time surveys of folks if we're even on a virtual meeting, where we can ask questions and have real time feedback come through from the folks that are on the call. And then even do static surveys with Survey Monkey and garner information back from the community. And it's a really great way for us to engage the community and also engage you, the Board of Ed, in this planning process. And just a couple of quick examples, these are, this is an example of what we presented and prepared for facility best use options back in 2015 for the Waterbury Elementary Schools study that we conducted. And we looked at four options. These are two of them. And the next slide just kind of zooms in on option B, which was the one that I believe was selected to move forward and what was, what generated the Wendell Cross project with the the new three group classroom per grade school in the in the Wendell Cross neighborhood. Which would then create some swing space and allow for renovation of the the next few schools in sequence. And when we develop these scenarios, we also look at how the capacity is impacted, not only for the school that we're developing, but also the others in sequence, and how that that shakes out across other schools in the district. We also look at the cost and list other major considerations as part of that option. And oftentimes, those options will then translate into some site plan studies. You can see, we developed a couple of options for the Wendell Cross site back in 2015, 2016 timeframe. And also looked at how that may translate to building floor plans. Now I realize this, the project took a different path as far as how it was laid out on the site, but these types of studies are what drives the numbers and the costs for the studies or for those options. So that that sums up the presentation. Happy to open it up for Q and A. Well, does it go back to you or?
Yeah, definitely. I would like to just add that, you know, we do have a short window to get this completed, and we have a lot of work to do. And this is really going to drive all our future funding projects, all future projects that we're going to under S R two and R. So we've already, we made contact with Mike Zubba and provided him almost all of the data as far as enrollment data, historical data from the state and as far as transfers. So now working on getting the blueprints ready for for this project so we can kick off, hopefully to get a meeting scheduled next week with, you know, find out what dates are available with Dr. Ruffin and get this project moving forward as fast as we can. I don't know, Doctor, if you want to add anything to the?
No, I actually, you know, spoke with Kemp today. Thank you very much for being here this evening and bringing the team, our members of the team. And, you know, it's going to require us to be able to work very closely, develop a schedule, you know, have a team in Waterbury that's able to respond so that we're we're not delaying the process and we're going to move forward. So it will require a point person on our side to make certain that there's constant communication and we don't skip a beat on this. And that we're going to work collaboratively on a communications plan so we could go out and make certain that we are engaging with the community and that we have future ongoing meetings with the board and with the city.
Any other comments or questions for the SLAM initiative while we have them here, guys? Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Hi, Kemp and and the rest of the panel. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to stress, and you said it, Kemp, that this was the team that's going to be working on this. And I would expect that the people that are on this on this presentation tonight are going to be the people working right through to the end. We're, you're the A team. We don't want the B team.
Oh, we stressed that during the selection process, Rocco, absolutely.
We like being part of the A team.
Thank you. I appreciate those nice comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through you. I know we did a some sort of a similar study, you know, five, six years ago or what have you. And when I brought that up, when we started talking about this, I was told that that report didn't really give us everything we needed. And that's why we had to go ahead with this report. So I don't think we should rush anything. I think we should do it properly. I get it. We have a calendar to follow. But if this is the report to make the other report obsolete, then we need to, we need to put out the correct report. So yes, time is of the essence. However, it also needs to be done correctly. Because five years from now, this board shouldn't have to hear that we had another report that didn't meet our needs, and we're going to have to do it again. So let's, let's get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have a comment? All right, guys. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very educational, and we will be seeing you in the future. So thanks.
Thank you for the invitation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a request approval of a student teacher affiliation agreement with the University of Hartford. And right after that, there is a similar request for the University of Connecticut. Juan Mendoza, the floor is yours for both agenda items.
Thank you. Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. The Office of Human Capital and Talent Management is requesting approval of a student teacher contract with the University of Hartford. This is a three year contract with the option to extend for an additional three years and is at no cost to the city or the Board of Education. Collaborating teachers do earn a stipend for the work. However, this is paid by the university. We currently have 24 teachers assigned to our district. In comparison, last fall, we only hosted 10. So mentoring student teachers is essential to the recruitment process in our district's grow your own efforts. These contracts make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next agenda item is yours too.
Office of Human Capital and Time Management is requesting approval of a one year affiliation agreement between the University of Connecticut and the City of Waterbury for their teacher residency program. The residency program will have two distinct parts, a paid internship portion and an unpaid student teaching portion. The paid internship portion will consist of five days per week in the school with a minimum of 14 hours a week in the content area between August 23rd, 2021 and January 14th, 2022. The city is projected to host five student residents and will pay them a rate of $100 a day. The unpaid student teaching portion will begin in January, on January 18th, 2022, and end on April 29th, 2022, and is in accordance with the existing student teacher affiliation agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mendoza on either agenda item? Karen Harvey, are you waving your hand?
Yes, yes, I am. Just just a quick question. And it may have been contained or mentioned earlier. But Juan, is is this residency program? Is this focused on our local student teaching programs? Like, are the folks here or are they in going to University of Hartford?
University of Hartford, and then some students are from Waterbury, and there's a couple at UConn too that are from the UConn area. So it's local universities.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Do you know how many students are local just by chance?
No, I do not. I could get that information for you.
Can you get that, please? I'd just like to know. Okay. And that's all I have, President Donald. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment or a question? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Next agenda item is a request of approval for a contract with West State Mechanical Incorporated for installation of heat pump and air conditioning system at 32 Hillside Avenue. Mr. Chris Harmon, I see you there. The floor is yours.
Yep. So anyways, this is for the old UConn building. And what it is, is it's obviously for West State Mechanical and the amount of $180,207. It's basically to put in a heat pump with the air conditioning system. It's on one floor only. So right now, it's actually being rented out for the by the Yeshiva. So this is funding by the S R one state funded project. And basically, it's for the ventilation for for the one floor of the school.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or comment for Chris, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, and then Commissioner Charles Stango?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. So UConn building and Yeshiva, and we're paying the tab. Why?
It's our building. We lease it out to the Yeshiva.
But is it the city building or is it the education department building?
It's the, I'd have to make sure, but I'm going to say it's owned by the city.
Then again, I would ask why we're paying for the bill. So if we can get some information on that, I would appreciate it.
I'd have to get that one in.
Commissioner Van Stone, I can, I can kind of chime in a little bit. This is part of the S R one money on the non equitable services. So a portion of this money goes to the non public schools. So this is coming from Yeshiva's non public schools of S R one. So it's, it's not part of our public.
I do recall that being part of it. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
So I have no question on the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Charles Stango, I think you were queued up to be next.
I was. I just echoing Tom Van Stone. I had the same question. All these years, I never realized that we, the Board of Ed, had anything to do with the old UConn buildings. But then Doreen shed light on that about it's a parochial school. So I totally get it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again, Doreen, for clarity. Any other questions or comments? All right, Chris, you're off the hook. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a request approval of the submission of the Connecticut State Department of Education Bridge Funding Education of Homeless Children and Youth Grant. Louise Brown, the floor is yours. Louise Brown? I know she was on. That's okay. You're there?
I am. Sorry, I was muted.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. This grant, Education of Homeless Children and Youth is a grant we've received multiple times in the past. It's a three year competitive grant. This year, the grant would be due again for another round of competition. But the State Department of Education is delaying the release of that three year application. But in the meantime, for grantees like Waterbury, who already have this grant, they've offered what they're calling bridge funding. We've identified the cost that we need to sustain the programs that we have from now until the end date of the bridge funding, which is November 30. That's the $42,000 represented in the letter I sent you. In addition to email communications, ultimately, at the end of July, the State Department of Ed requested that we submit a small application in the eGrant system, which requires sign offs from our local board. So given the urgency of applying by the deadline, we have submitted the application but are requesting your approval for that submission to effectively extend benefits of that same grant for Waterbury from now through November 30.
Thank you, Louise. Our next item is a request of approval of a professional services agreement with Sue Vivian for consultations, consultant services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant. Mr. Darren Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Board of Education Commissioners, and of course, Dr. Ruffin. Tonight before you is part of our School Readiness Council decision from the Quality Enhancement Grant given to us through the School Readiness Grant. It would be for $22,000 to provide pyramid training, continue pyramid training for our school readiness programs here in the city. This is a pyramid program built on supporting students' social emotional development based on the idea of three models, universal model, a secondary model to support targeted students with additional supports, and then a tertiary level that would provide individual and intensive support and intervention for students at their youngest of ages of about four and five years old in the preschools across the city.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Nobody's waving their hand. Darren, you are queued up for the next agenda item, which is item number seven. A request approval of professional services agreement with Easter Seals Rehabilitation in Greater Waterbury to provide consulting services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Program.
Thank you, President Pagano. A similar item from the same grant for $32,000 to contract with Easter Seals Rehabilitation Center to ensure our students who are in need of behavior therapy services receive those services in our school readiness programs.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Darren? Seeing no one waving their hand, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number eight, request approval of job specifications for the new position of supervisor of technology for teaching and learning. Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Mendoza, I see your names associated with it.
Thank you, President Pagano. I think this is our first joint, first joint try here, Mr. Mendoza. So let's see if we can, we can nail this one. So this is a position that was brought to the Personnel Committee. It is a supervisor of technology for teaching and learning. It would be a SAW administrator. As a reminder, for the Board, the SAW administration scale is 111,554 to 131,829. That is from step one to step nine. The funding for this position would be the Alliance Grant, and this position would report to me. As you can see below, the education and experience on the first page and the licenters certifications and requirements are generally broad because we're looking for a highly effective teacher who also, who also has technological skills, who is Google certified trained level one and two, and who is preferred to be a Google certified trainer and to have ISTE training as well. We are looking for the essential functions of this position. Really, first and foremost, is to ensure that the millions of dollars the district has spent on technology that we have someone ensuring that 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 technology is being used effectively in the classroom. That's the, that's the, that's the best way to to put it. So we've spent over the last few years several million dollars on ensuring students have laptops and that we have working technology in the classrooms. What we don't have is a specific person in the district to ensure that this, this technology is being implemented to the highest abilities across all levels. What this person would be doing is also working with our district technology plan. They'd be the one that is facilitating that to develop it, implement it, and monitor it throughout the district. We also are, as you may have heard Dr. Ruffin speak of, we are starting to prepare for a virtual academy as well in the district. And that will take expertise and that will take focus from district personnel to ensure that we are offering not just a virtual academy, but all different options for students to be able to take virtual classes, whether it be initial classes and courses outside of the regular school day. Or whether it becomes a complete school and academy students can enroll into. Again, that will take expertise and dedication to do so. We also would anticipate this position to, to work and collaborate with the Welcome Center and Parent Liaisons to ensure our family members and community members are well informed and truly prepared to support students. to support students through the use of technology. As many of this changes for our students, as though does it change for our parents as well. And so offering specific support for them to access all of those curriculum changes is important to us. In addition to that, this position would develop professional learning for adults across the district in technology in collaboration with the Human Capital Department. They would continue to ensure that our educators and staff members across the district become Google certified. They would manage the Google G Suite for Education in collaboration with Will Zuda's office and work with Will Zuda's office in the background for all of these programs to ensure their effectiveness and they are streamlined with our curriculums. And finally, this, this, as, as part of the essential skills, as there are many, the one that stood out the most would be also to coordinate, monitor, and prepare district-wide technology budget as it relates to teaching and learning. So not just the hardware, not just bringing the computers in, but ensuring that that hardware is being used effectively and that we have a budget that meets the needs for students and that collaborate with their fellow content supervisors in their areas to ensure we are leveraging the technology for learning across the district. It is one, it is, it is a new position for Waterbury, but it would not be a new position for, for districts to adopt as their, as this position was, the, the, the language in this position was adopted from several other districts that have gone this route. And we, we researched and implemented and looked at what other districts are doing about this size, some smaller, some larger, and, and how they're managing the, what seems to be the, the, the teeming amount of technology that has now been introduced and, and to ensure that students are, are getting the most out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do we have any questions or comments for Darren on this? Commissioner Tom Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. So we complain we don't get enough money in this grant, but once again, we're gonna create a new position. And you highlighted, Mr. Schwartz, the letter C on the form for knowledge, skills, and abilities. Well, actually, skills, there's only four of them listed. Quite a few abilities that would be on any job write-up, almost has nothing to do with the job itself. And the bulk of it is knowledge of, which I'm not sure how you define knowledge of when you do an interview. So I, I just don't know in these times, with everything we're trying to juggle, being told that there's a hundred and seventy positions that we can't fill because we can't offer enough money. But we, once again, find an opportunity to create a new SAW position and another supervised position. So there's, there's not a chance I'm gonna support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have a comment or a question? All right. Seeing no one waving their hands, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which again is Darren, a request approval of a new high school course. School course African-American slash Black and Puerto Rican slash Latino courses of study. Mr. Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, President Pagano. I just need a second here to make sure I can screen share. Should've done this one first. Okay.
While you're doing that, I gotta take a quick walk. I'll be listening.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, you all can see that now.
Yep.
I see, I see one nod, so I'll go with that. All right. So thank you very much, President Pagano. My last agenda item tonight, I'm very excited to, to, we've talked about this quite, quite a bit, quite often, and for, for, it seems to be a long time now, it's finally coming to fruition, is the Connecticut Public Act number nineteen twelve and the now-written and hopefully adopted curriculum for African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies curriculum. As a reminder on the history, this is, this is, this is somewhat of a unique curriculum for us in the district. This is the first statewide curriculum really truly being adopted by the state of Connecticut. Historically, the state of Connecticut doesn't typically write statewide curriculums. Usually, curriculums are written in-house and/or adopted in-house and/or shared across multiple districts. This is historic, and you can read the history of the legislation on there. What, what I want to, what I want to point out on that slide, though, is that in the upcoming year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, schools may offer the course. We, we, and then next year, they are required to offer the course. We are offering this course for all high school students in Waterbury for next year. And so we are jumping full force into this, being a pilot for the, for the state with all schools. We have, as part of this advisory group, the, the great part about this, this curriculum is that it, when you have a state department behind writing a curriculum, you can access resources that we typically can't access at a local level. I, we, we would not be able to pull in the one hundred and fifty-two state national members of the advisory group, many of them being college professors, high school teachers, high school department chairs across the state, professional learning facilitators, community educational partners and educational advocates. And just to give you an idea, the college professors are ranging from Yale, University of Hartford, Central, Western, Eastern, Southern, UConn, NBCC, University of Tennessee, Connecticut College, US Coast Guard, Capital Community, Goodwin, Three Rivers Community, Middlesex. Educational partners included the Witness Stones Project, the Amistad Center at the Wadsworth, Puerto Rican Latino Content Development Committee, the Study of Popular Music, Connecticut Commission for Educational Technology, Citywide Youth Coalition, African Caribbean American Parents of Children with Disabilities, Students for Educational Justice, Connecticut Council for Reform, Gilderfamilien Center, and Teach for America, including state representatives as well on this committee. Course overview, you can, you can read this slide, so I won't read it for you, but there, there is a broad, there's a, there's a broad coverage in this course. It is a one-year credit, one-credit, year-long elective course that is being offered to upper-grade students, and I, I believe Beta's gonna, I mean, I'll cover that a little bit more of that on the next slide. But this is a, a year-long course that really looks at US history, society, economy, culture throughout the years up until the present time. As I mentioned, it's a full-year course in semester one. The focus is on African-American and Black history. And the semester two transitions over to focus on Puerto Rican, Latino history. This is an elective class for eleventh, twelfth graders. As of, as of right now, that was the recommendation from, from the advisors and from the state via CERC. CERC was the company that was really the one that drove this work. CERC was the one that was asked by the state to be the collaborators in this work, and so kudos to them to be able to pull in all these experts to be able to write this curriculum. It is aligned with the Connecticut Social Studies Framework, but it also includes many of the ELA proficiency standards that we also align our curriculums with as well. And on here with me is Beta Harris, our Social Studies Supervisor, who was able to also be part of this really important work, was able to attend the meetings consistently across the, the last year or so, being interbuilt to the, to the development of this curriculum. And we are so lucky to have her to be an expert in this curriculum, to be able to also deliver it to our Social Studies teachers here in the district, and I'll have her go over a few slides.
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, as well as Board of Ed Commissioners. Darren went over with the previous slides, but on the, if you did receive the PowerPoint in a presentation, the previous slide has the PDF attached hyperlink, and in parentheses are the page numbers to the PDF if you want to go along with it. The course overview and summary of the course, it was sent, it was shared to us by CERC so that every program of studies across the state has the same summary of the course. And this, you'll go to on page eleven, you'll find the scope and sequence to, of the course. And basically, what is nice about this is that every student in Connecticut is having the same material given to them. They have the same curriculum with the same hyperlinks and the same training is given to all the teachers. So I think that is very, and it's important to us. Semester one focuses on African-American and Black history, and it has six units. Units one through three is, it basically covers the African origins and their contributions to civilizations where they were enslaved, traded, their struggle to gain freedom, equality and social justice. Here is where they also have specific, in each of the units, what is nice is they make that connection to the history of Connecticut. So in each unit, they have the topic, and then they also have lessons that cover what happened here in Connecticut. Also, they, in units one and two is where they cover slaves. They were very specific on slaves here in Connecticut. Units four through six starts with Reconstruction. And what I like about this is we ask our students, we're going to ask the students is, was Reconstruction helpful or did it work? And it allows our kids, by giving them the tools, the primary documents, and get, teaching them the skills, they have to come to the conclusion that was Reconstruction, if it was a failure? And then it goes into Jim Crow laws, into the Great Migration, covers the Harlem Renaissance, and all the way up to present-day Black Lives Matter. And it ends with what are the greatest issues facing Blacks and African-Americans in the US today? And also brings it back to what goes on here in Connecticut. And at the bottom, we have, there's hyperlinks there as well for the At-A-Glance units for you to look at. So then if you go to semester two, it's the Puerto Rican Latino Studies. And that here, there's only five units, and here, one major difference between units one and two is, or semester one and two, I should say, semester one is taught chronologically. Semester two is taught thematically, which was interesting, the difference in it. So here, we have a Unit One deals with the identity of Latinos and how that identity has evolved over time. Units Three, it focuses on the politics and the economic policies that have helped or hindered social and economic growth in the past, and it also touches upon present day. Unit Four is Latin American Independence, Haitian Revolution, and the struggle for Puerto Rican independence and how Latinos have used, which have they, how they use art and music to resist and to protest. Unit Five is the impact and contributions that Puerto Ricans and Latinos have had here in Connecticut, and what additional impact they might have in the future. So it, it touches on in the past, and then it brings it up to present day, which a lot of times our kids question. So the resources that we have, CERC has released a list of resources. There's a hyperlink there. And it also has been made public on their site. So it's six pages of resources, and we have looked into them. What is important is this, of focus is that they do not want a textbook for the class. They want it to be student-driven, and if you look at the curriculum, there's hyperlinks. Everything is here for the major, the teachers to have access, and it's quick. There is a PDF on the site where teachers can download, and they have live hyperlinks that will be updated. Beyond that, the Connecticut State Department of Ed has created a digital platform. It's called Go Open CT. So teachers are able to go onto the website, put what grade they are teaching, what level they're teaching, the topic, and it'll bring up lessons for you with everything spelled out for you from start to finish, with the documents they need, with the, how they're going to assess our kids. So I thought that was, that's just new. It's brand new. Then we have the Speakers Bureau. They're compiling a list of local dignitaries and professors and politicians, all that, that will be able, that we will have access to. And I asked for an updated list, and it's, it's still being compiled, but they said that by the start of school, it will be here with all educators. And next week is the week that the Waterbury team will be attending a week-long professional development that CERC is leading.
Thank you, Beta. Appreciate those updates. And so just to close this off, that was a great transition, Beta. And I know at the Curriculum Committee and those on the committee, they, they, hopefully, I know they were as excited as we were to bring it. What were you thinking? Plus, that the students are gonna be able to access this curriculum for next year if the Board approves. And one of the questions we had was making sure that those that need the professional learning to be able to properly teach this course get that. So we, we did give that feedback to CERC, and I think CERC was on top of it. They were aware of it. They realized that not every teacher comes with the skills to be able to teach this. So there is a pretty comprehensive list of professional learning, which started on July fourteenth, which many of us attended. There's a week-long session next week, as Beta alluded to, where our Waterbury teachers will be attending. Beta will be following that up with a professional learning on August twenty-fourth with those teachers. CERC will continue that training quarterly throughout the year with a culminating PD on June ninth to share best practices with other educators across the state. And what you don't see in here is those, obviously, those, those daily, weekly, monthly meetings that Beta will have with department chairs to monitor the progress of the program. And, and remember, this is, this is year one of implementation of curriculum. And this curriculum, like any other curriculum we, we bring before the Board, there's, there's bumps. There's sometimes certain classes are going faster than others. And so, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned here, one of implementation of curriculum, I think. But we're just so excited to, to bring it to you tonight and get it going. And, and part of the execution on our part would be to make sure that teachers are feeling supported, students are, are truly mastering the concepts and skills within that, that curriculum. And we will continue to provide them with, with the best possible implementation we, we can deliver. As mentioned, we do have six teachers that will be leading this course on their campus this year. There's two hundred eighty-nine students currently registered for the course, but we have over three hundred students that, that were interested in, in this as even a possible second choice. And so as schedules kind of shake their way out, we'll see what that final number is, but we know two hundred eighty-nine are signed up right now. Waterbury will account for five out of the forty high schools that are piloting this curriculum this year. So we've got a pretty good standing there in terms of state representation. And, and, you know, recently, I know Dr. Ruffin was able to attend a workshop on some materials being, being recommended from the State Department. We're looking into those curriculum materials. Part of our presentation later regarding SARP includes additional curriculum material purchases. And we're looking to, to those materials to provide younger students some more support and some curriculum that could build as a foundation that leads to this higher-level elective course in the younger grades, so that we can implement this, 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 this type of learning that isn't just, has to be one course, but maybe in, what does it look like in kindergarten? What does it look like in third grade? What does it look like in fifth grade? What does it look like in ninth? So that students are entering this course with a strong foundation to be successful. And then, of course, there's always the opportunity after year one to, to make it better, to see what else we can do. what else we can do and can this lead to some other advanced type of course eventually into the district? You know, this doesn't have to be just a one all be all, the only course that we ever offer, but it is going to be year one. We're, we're, we're going to have some bumps in the road, but you know, this has been a long time coming and we're excited to bring this to you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Veda. Melissa Serrano Adorno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Darren and Vida, I do have to apologize that during our curriculum or our committee meeting, I didn't have my notes with me, I had an emergency with my pet, so I didn't have my questions with me. So I do want to apologize in advance because I do have several questions or comments. One of the first things that I noticed, obviously, I'm super excited about this curriculum. Let me just start off by that. But I think based on the semesters, they, they should switch the order on which they teach the course. So like they should start with the Latino culture in the first semester, which is in time for the Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs in September to October, and then teach the African American culture in the springtime for, just in time for the Black History Month in February or March. Any particular reason why they did it the opposite? I just thought it would be better to be coincidental to run during those times of Heritage Month and celebrations.
Yeah, we can give that feedback to CIRC and, and let them know. I mean, and so we'll see if other districts have similar comments and, and we can, we can certainly give that feedback.
Thank you, Darren. Another, like I said, I have several, so I apologize. In the advisory group, did they ever consider having students involved in making suggestions on this curriculum?
I think they did.
I know I saw like the youth leader, but I noticed there were majority, you know.
Yeah, I think what they're really heavily, at least from the meetings I was able to attend in Veda, you can jump in if, if you heard something different. But I think a lot of, you know, in terms of the development, they were looking at the, the professionals, the professors, the local community, numbers to develop it, what they're counting on students is the feedback. What they're counting on students is, because remember, we're, we're implementing at full force, but we're only, you know, five of 40 high schools, they're, they're counting on students for their feedback in the upcoming year to be able to make those changes that every curriculum has to make after a first year of implementation. And so I think that's what they're counting on is student voice after implementation and suggestions going from there.
Okay. And eventually I will forward these to you as well. But in Unit Five in the second semester in the curriculum, it does mention the Latina woman, but it's more based on modern concepts as a suggestion. I kind of wanted them to add more of the women's contributions to that unit, like for the Latina woman, the same for the Unit Six, for the, you know, African American and Black woman, possibly incorporate more about their contributions. That was just a suggestion. Another thing that I did realize in Unit Four and Five in the Latino study, I kind of thought that this curriculum was going to include more of other Latino races. I pretty much saw like Puerto Rico, Mexico, a little bit about Guatemala, but it was also more about immigration and DACA. But they don't talk about other Latinos such as Cubans and Venezuelans, which are currently suffering from recent inhumane conditions. They should also been, you know, maybe speak a lot about the Brazilians and Colombian, Peruvians, who was actually having a communist issue currently as well. So I feel like it's lacking or missing history of South American countries, which also include Afro Latinos. So just something maybe like you said, for CIRC to really think about. And again, I didn't have time to check the PDF links, so I will do that when I have more, more time. Another thing that I did mention, which I think is important, and I think you might get this feedback for your students, is I definitely would suggest talking about the LGBTQ plus in both the Afro and Latino races and how it impacts them in their own race. Because I think that's large in the community and it comes, you know, with their history. One other thing, I think I'm almost done Darren and Veda. There, I know Ms. Gopi had mentioned during the committee meeting, there's not a lot of mentioning on music, dance, or even food. I know in chapter 4.4, they mentioned songs, but there's form of protest. Protests are such as resistance to colonial status in Puerto Rico. Again, I have to double check the links, but there's even an activity based off the music that the students listen to today. In Lesson 6.3, Black Culture Production talks about the arts and music of African Americans, but these aren't celebratory or correlated to heritage or tradition at all. But it's more rather Afro Latina art continues to be involved in political propaganda. So I did recently clicked on one of the links, I did that today in the PDF file, and it did include a Spanish Arabic music, which was very nice to see. And actually, it was pretty soothing. But I do want to keep, continue, but I want that to kind of, you know, that, that is a part of our, our history and what actually connects us, which leads me to my last comment or question, Darren. Happy, we could applaud. They should have had to me, in my opinion, maybe you could recommend this to CIRC for either the following year, because I know this is already in place, to have a unit or a section dedicated to the collaboration between both the African American and Hispanic communities, such as Blacks and Latinos collaborate for civil rights and economical justice, the value of African American and Latino coalitions to the American South. You know, to just to be able to explore these differences as well as the similarities, to be able to initiate an open discussion amongst both races. So I appreciate the separation of each, but I would also like to see the history of how they collaborated together, because we do have differences, but we also have similarities. And thank you so much Darren or Vida, if you have any comments or questions, but I would gladly forward this to you. I apologize again for the lengthiness, but I took the time to really go through it. I do have the hard copy and I, and I'm super excited. So I want to make sure that the students get the most out of this curriculum, because I think it's, it's amazing. It's a long time coming and I'm so proud that Waterbury is one of the cities that is going to be able to implement this for our district. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you Darren and Veda for your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno. I think Commissioner Charles Stango, your hand was up next.
Commissioner, can I just, can I just make a few quick comments so they don't just leave, stay there in the air?
Make them quick, we're running out of time.
I will, just, I want to thank you for that. And just, Commissioner, you know, I think you just highlighted why this can't be just one standalone course, because you can't fit everything into one course. You just, you can't, you can't do it. It's already 250 page curriculum. And so it's, you bring up everything you brought up, I was with you 100%. Yes, important for our students, I have no disagreements on my part. And I'll remind you that Ms. Gopi also said she didn't read the curriculum, she just made that comment. But if you actually go back and look through it, there is a lot of music, like I think Veda did the same thing, I went and started tabbing them and then I stopped tabbing them because I saw there's a lot of gospel, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of song, especially in the first semester. And so, but, but again, if there's also going to be a lot of teacher ability to be able to flex a little bit on this, but you just, you kind of made the point with all of your comments, I agree with everything you said, Commissioner. It just, it can't be one standalone course, we can't put all of our eggs in this basket to be the one place where kids learn this. It has to be in their education throughout Waterbury Public Schools. So I appreciate you, I'm with you on that. We, we, we got to find a way to make that happen all the way through the curriculum, not just in one course.
Thank you Darren. And I know we mentioned during the committee, whatever can't maybe possibly fit in the curriculum could be maybe somehow implemented during the celebrations that, you know, Adela Jorge, you know, you know, does. So that's just correct during the celebratory.
Absolutely, celebrations and these are teachers that teach other courses who are going to learn from this course as well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Charles Stango, I think your hand was up next.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions Darren, and you can answer them as briefly as you can. First of all, I just want to say that I was impressed with this work that I saw on computer screen. I have to be like Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno and get a hard copy because I can't follow it so much on that screen. But I did make some observations. You guys did a great job on it and it must a lot of work by a lot of people. Quick question number one is, if this curriculum is mandated by the state, do we still have to vote on it? I mean, can we, can we turn up with a vote? No, not that that would happen. And then we don't have to do it? I mean, what's the deal on that? Darren?
I wouldn't dare tell the board that their vote wouldn't matter. So I, I, I do think, I don't know what the answer is to that. I know that this is mandated by the state to offer it. And so, and this is the first time, so I believe it's in law that we have to offer it. And so, as you said, Commissioner Stango, and I, you know, being here long enough, I guess I can say this, I wouldn't foresee that being a problem here in Waterbury. I'm not sure if other communities and committees, what, what's going to happen if that does come up. But I, I know that it is in law that we must offer this course next year.
Okay.
If I may just, if Mr. President, if I could just expand on the requirement, I can give that info.
Go for it.
Thank you. Sorry, Charles, I just wanted to bring in the exact, the, the exact bill says we must offer a, not, not a mandatory course, an elective. And it must be offered, it must be in our offerings by next year. Now, we already had some curriculum, but it didn't necessarily, it wasn't as extensive as what the expectation was here. So just to clarify that, it is law, must be offered as an elective, and it's supposed to be in by next school year, not this September. So we're actually a year ahead of the game also. So just, just for that clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben Stone. Charles, were you all set with your question?
No, I have a few more, if you don't mind.
Please, please hurry, we're running out of time.
Okay. Darren, how are the teachers chosen to, for that to be their assignment?
I know Veda worked with the principals, kind of did a, a look at the, the courses that the teachers have already taught. One, number two, their effectiveness, number three, their background and willingness to teach the course and their interest in the course. And, and so it's, it's a mix of a few things, but we wanted teachers that were highly motivated to teach the course to start this off, and that's, that's where we started.
Okay, thank you. Next question quickly would be, what level of rigor would you say that this course is? I realize it's only one credit and there's a lot of stuff there. In regards to student assessments, will they be written? Will there be a pen and paper final exam?
Yeah, all of our, all of our courses have exams. And so yes, there will be exams through this course. And I would say that although it's being offered as 11th and 12th grade, there were a lot, a lot of college professors on this curriculum rating. And so it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, I don't want to say difficult, it is a rigorous course, it is a rigorous course for sure. But I think one that attracts a lot of engagement and interest of students and anticipate students to do well on it.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, in reviewing the curriculum, I see that Black Lives Matter is listed for a presentation and also for a possible speaker. Now, BLM is just one group of many activist groups regarding this, this curriculum. Much controversy surrounds this one group. And, and, but I do agree that students should be aware of Black Lives Matter and, and learn about it. However, students, in my opinion, students should also be made aware of and discuss other alternative views and philosophies, some perhaps more conservative. For example, students should learn about the Robert Woodson Institute and/or the Congress for Racial Equity. I didn't see those listed or anything like them. Can you shed light on that? Is anything like that in this curriculum? Where because I see that Black Lives Matters is there, I just feel that there should be an alternative discussion, an alternative view, an alternative philosophy. Can you shed some light on that? And then I'd be.
Yeah, sure. I think that the idea of adding Black Lives Matter is, and in terms of the, the final unit, is because it's, it's, it's just the movement of the day that is, that is the, the most contemporary and I would say the most popular in terms of activism, as, as I think all would know that. And so, and, and then I think in anything, Commissioner Stango, it is not as if it is being presented as this is the right way of thinking, but this is a way, an activism, this is a movement and these are the beliefs behind that movement. What students decide if that is a movement they agree with or not, is part of the critical thinking we want in all of our courses. And so why the other organizations that you spoke of are not part of this? We could give that feedback to CIRC for sure, to see if there's some balance there. But I do want to make sure I, I, I answer that about Black Lives Matter. Because again, presenting students with controversial facts is not new to education. It's what students can do and critically think about those controversial facts, which is, makes us, I think, a strong, strong democracy.
Okay, I, I hear you, I understand you. I'm going to be looking for more of the other views and philosophies. If I don't see them, I may not be able to support this program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Commissioner Karen Harvey, I see your hand.
Yes, President Pagano, I understand we're on a time constraint here, but I just would like to take some time, just to go, and just while it's on my mind, I think it's, it's very important that our students be able to learn about the, what's going on now and they know about Black Lives Matter. So with, having said that, I would hope that those who are listening, which I invited a lot of folks to listen in because of this presentation, to give us feedback on what you've heard. But also, if you don't do that, then to give us feedback, of his students to give us feedback on how they feel about this, this course. But just real quickly, and I have more to say next week, is what kind of perked my ears Darren was, that the mention of a speakers, a list of speakers, local speakers, and I'd like to know who was putting that list together. Because, just to make sure, I mean, I'm glad CIRC did it, but CIRC doesn't know about Waterbury. So I just want to make sure that they're getting the proper information and Tuesday from, you know, the list of folks who are local, who could shed light on what has happened here in Waterbury as it relates to the national level. Darren, you can give me that, so a little feedback on that.
CIRC is, CIRC is compiling that list now, so there's options if there's local people that are listening to this presentation and that you are aware of it, that can bring more to this and want to get on to the, not just the Waterbury, but the, the New Haven region area. I mean, I think CIRC would be open for any of those. We have some local, we, we have some local leaders that were part of the development of this curriculum. And so I see, you know, people, not just Veda and I, but Warren Leach and a few other people who were listed in the advisory group as people that signed up to take part in this. So, but, but in addition to that, Commissioner Harvey, there will be opportunities, we, we talked about this at the Curriculum Committee, is that, you know, year one, we're going to be able to get our, our feet wet and, and, and learn how, how the piecing goes for this, this course and get a good idea of what local, local, local historians, local experts could bring and enhance this curriculum. And it will give us a really good idea of who we could, of who we can bring in, when we can bring them in and what parts of the curriculum to do that. So CIRC is creating that list, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we won't be able to, be able to lean on our local experts, as long as it aligns to the curriculum and the objectives, the goals within, within the curriculum. We're certainly open for that. But, and they, and similar to Commissioner Adorno, Serrano Adorno, is we also don't want to put this one course as the only course that, where this is possibly going to happen. And so again, it's a 250, 60 page curriculum for a full year course. And so, you know, the, the local experts, if they don't align exactly with what this course has to offer, we have to find ways in other courses to, then, and see where they can possibly align. But also through our celebrations, through motivational speaking, through just mentorship, can also be used. And so, with a long winded answer to the question, so it's, it's, there's, to boil it down, CIRC, I would, I would recommend them to contact CIRC and, and either Veda and Veda. and either Veda, and Veda can put them in contact with SIRC. If you if you if you send it to P Harris at waterbury.k12.c t dot U S, Veda will get that over to SIRC to add them to the list.
Can you e- can you email that to me, Darren? And I just want to cut you off a little bit because I I just want to get into some other stuff with that at seven o'clock right now. But I I'm good. I'm good with your response. One other thing that I wanted to emphasize was that uh um, yeah, Jay Gopi uh brought up a really good point about the music, et cetera. We talk about that, I'm sure. Uh, African-American studies with um, you know, the Black uh Renaissance, et cetera. Um, we have our local uh Matituck Museum, which just recently opened, reopened. And the things that they're doing culturally, you know, I would hope that we would include them in on what we're doing, particularly with this course, uh, because they're they have an exhibit going on now. Um, and they have just kind of rejuvenated this whole thing about culture and and culture that's going on in the city. So I would hope we could we could kind of tap into some of that. Uh, we alre- already use uh Matituck Museum for other things. I think with our fifth graders, I'm I'm not mistaken, looking on the budget. But we really need to tap into what they are doing, the superb job they are doing with the cultural culture um here in the city of Waterbury. Um, and lastly, again, I would hope that the people that are listening, I'm I'm fishing up President Gunn. Those who are listening in uh via email, whatever the case may be, to give us feedback on just what you heard. This is not a one and done, as as Darren said, but and this is a pilot. So we can improve upon it or make revisions, whatever. But um, I I just want to hear that feedback of students, from parents, community leaders, et cetera. So that's all I have, President Gunn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Harvey. Anyone else have a comment for Darren or Veda? I don't see anybody else's hands waving, so thank you very much, everyone. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's update. Dr. Ruffin, you have two parts. An A and a B, it looks like. No, an A. The American Rescue Plan, ARP, and then the ESER release presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and uh all Commissioners. My presentation is not short. And uh and it is, um, you know, I I feel that it's important to go through it all with you um to get your your feedback and to also let everyone know where we're headed with this because it is one of the most um one of the hugest pros- projects that we will be working on, that has the potential to impact this district in ways that we have never been able to do before. And so that is to discuss with you uh and show you uh a a summary of what has been happening over the cor- course of many months and to explain what the next steps are in receiving not only your feedback and and input, but also that of the community and all of our stakeholders. And I think that um I I I I understand that it's a little bit long, but it is the American Rescue Plan for elementary and secondary school emergency release. In other words, we call this sometimes ESER III. And most people may know it as ARP ESER or ARP ESER. But it's uh the eighty-nine-plus million dollars that uh we are recipients of. And the plan for how we're going to use that to be able to impact our district in a very meaningful way. Uh, tag teaming with me tonight will be Darren Schwartz and Doreen Biolo. And there is a presentation that we will show on the screen, and we will speak to them. Uh, uh, we definitely want to leave some time for questions and and input. And know that this is not the final or at all, but it has taken a very long time to compile all of the comments that teachers, staff, families, community, principals, board members, city uh uh officials have given us over the course of many, 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 many months. You know, if you remember, that we've always had a need to do things that we could not afford. Uh, and so when we were recipients of ESER II, we were excited to place some of those needs within ESER II. And when we received the ARP ESER and had an opportunity to put some of those things that we could not possibly have imagined being able to do into a draft presentation, it it took into consideration what everybody said. And presents it to you tonight in such a way that you could see where it falls within the five required categories of ARP ESER. And then leads us to the next steps, which is a a but a massive communication with multiple stakeholders to see if they see themselves in what they've they've told us over the last two years into this ARP ESER. So we're going to take uh that from the very beginning. Uh, I will present some, and Darren and Doreen, you just jump in. If you can just go to that next slide. These are the five required categories that we must meet in order to have an ARP ESER application, which is due on August sixteenth. We we must address learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. Sometimes you'll see this category categorized as learning loss, which I don't believe is accurate because I don't believe our students lost as much as they uh uh they did learn something, but it's totally different the way that they learned it during COVID. Uh, and so the acceleration, moving students on, making students assure that they're going to be successful as we move forward, has to be in this first category of the ARP ESER plan. Family and commu- family and community connections. It's huge, and it's been on the board's mind for a very long time. Include it is included in the strategic plan. It was included in ESER II. And now you see it as a requirement in ARP ESER as well. Social, emotional, and mental health of the students and the school staff. That has always been high priority. And while we were not able to afford it during ESER I, we see that we were able to implement some things in ESER II, and now you see it as a big component in ARP ESER. The next category, strategic use of technology, staff development, and the digital divide. That was huge in ESER II, but it becomes even larger in ARP ESER. And and it becomes one of the fourth um priorities within this ARP. Uh, and then finally, the building safe and healthy schools. We've long heard about the, you know, the the conditions of buildings and and making them um better ventilation, and how do we really create an environment that is conducive to learning for all of our thirty-three buildings? And what does that look like? And how are we able to do that? Uh, and and so this building safe and healthy schools is a big component of what we have to write this application for in the ARP ESER. And then as we go to the next slide, you will begin to see some of the um the the some of the differences. So you'll see ESER I, which was in March of twenty twenty, this was to try to get us to survive because we were struggling with the pandemic, the beginnings of the pandemic. ESER II, forty-one million, six hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars. And that was awarded in December of twenty-one. And it addressed those components that I just discussed with you. And that was to be able to get us so we could, you know, thrive in during and in the midst of COVID, but still with some plans about how are we going to reopen schools. And ESER III really allows us an opportunity to rethink and reimagine where we where we're going. And and actually look at prioritizing all of those things that you, as well as others, have told us were essential to be able to move our district forward. Uh, moving to the next slide, and that's eighty-nine million, six hundred ninety-one dollars and uh six hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars. So a a huge amount of money. When when you look at what we could potentially do in the district, it's very important that we are intentional about it and that we can have a return on our investment. In other words, as a result of this funding, we should be able to say that we've done something very significant that is demonstrated through performance in Waterbury Public Schools. This is the timeline. And you'll see that at this point, you know, we we started in March. Uh, you know, we had some milestones that we had to hit in May and in June. And of course, July, putting some some things together. And in July, uh, uh, and August, what you're going to see now is a product or a draft of what we've heard for the last two years. And then uh continued efforts to go out and get community feedback so that we could write the application and submit it on August sixteenth. We have to spend this money, no, and use it, and it into effect no later than September of twenty twenty-four. Darren, would you want to start with the academic supports, learning loss, and learning acceleration and recovery? And then Doreen, do the next one, and then we'll just tag team.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Doctor. Good evening again, Board. Uh, as you know, uh, the academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration, and recovery um is the first priority. Um, and in ESER ARP, twenty percent of the funding has to go to address learning loss. Now, that doesn't mean it's all in priority one. Some learning loss is also tied to social, emotional development and a few other areas. Uh, but you will see on the on the screen a survey response from when we um uh talked to students about what they're looking for, and the staff survey response as well uh for what they're looking for as well. Um, as you can see on the next page, uh, of that total funding, fifteen million, nine hundred ninety thousand would be going to this area. Um, some of the highlights in this area uh would be to develop a virtual academy if um we have proper uh staffing to be able to do so. Um, to update all curriculum and assessments um and and um and and technology in those curriculum and assessments. That's the big bulk of this of of this funding. Uh, to offer additional courses in high school, again, um alluded to additional courses, not just during the day, but also possibilities of additional courses after school hours, uh, virtually for students to earn um credits. Career counselors for students, not school counselors or guidance counselors, as as some people know them as, but career counselors to um uh support students and and to the what's next after graduation. Portrait of a guy graduate, to take the portrait of a graduate, really expand on that. Create mastery-based learning opportunities, assessment, and supports tied to our portrait of the graduate. So it uh it goes from um being a great graphic and some great talking points to really truly being in a classroom on a daily basis for for students and staff. We want to provide one-on-one instructional tutors using our current staff within the the district, finding the most effective teachers at each school and offering them an opportunity to uh virtually go into students' uh to students' homes on off-hours to be able to provide that one-on-one instructional support beyond the school day. And in addition to that, there is a highlight of the summer enrichment and learning. Uh, this includes the summer enrichment, many of uh some very effective uh summer uh courses that we offered. Uh, this year, as you know, we offered three sections in the summer for high school students, first time ever we've done that. We also uh worked with community organizations such as uh the Y and the Boys and Girls Club to offer students free scholarships to those programs throughout the summer. I'll just keep going here. Uh, oh, sorry, Doreen, go ahead.
I could do it. That's okay.
You got it.
Thanks, Darren. So a priority two um pertains to family and community connections. Um, you'll just see like of a survey here uh as posted and and what some of the responses were um with the families, um obviously staying connected um even during COVID time. Um, staying connected with the students and with their families. Um, and what we needed to do during that time in Google Classroom, um, as you can see, was a great platform for our students to use and and to communicate with their teachers. Um, they couldn't be in person. Um, so in this category, um, we have an estimated budget amount of one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Um, we also have a lot of um parent involvement and and also of family and community um funding through other grants and entitlements. Um, so when you look at that one point, one million, five eighty-three, I I, you know, it's it's not that we're not putting enough in here. We do have other funding um in other areas as well um that we're uh maximizing um for this area. So some of the highlights um would be um some art and cultural experiences. So kind of engaging in some enrichment programs with the community. Um, so students and families can, you know, maybe attend museums. Uh, we can have passes for them to attend museums, um, some um theater programming, um, things that they can get involved with um in the community and and kind of bringing family, students, family together, and the community together. So those are some of the things we're talking about for art and cultural enrichment programs. Um, another idea is to um make some of our schools possibly a community school. Uh, we would need coordinators to uh step into that um role. So we have that budgeted um under family and community connections. Also expanding training in new technology for teaching and learning tools for parents and families. That could be an expansion to our welcome center um and providing all types of resources and supports uh for families. And uh lastly, continue to strengthen communication um and translation capacity. Um, we also had put this amount um in ESER II. We feel it's important to continue, and we're remaining uh this line item in ESER III um to provide uh translation support um that teachers can use over the phone to support uh parents um in all different languages.
I can jump in. Oh, Doc, you have it.
You can take that one if you want. I'll take the next one, and then Doreen can take the next one.
That sounds like a deal. So school safety, uh, and social, emotional well-being, a lot of that learning loss is also um embedded in this as well. Um, and uh, you know, I I I I'm really excited. Uh, you know, usually I'm the academic guy, but I'm really excited for some of the things that we'll be offering for s- uh students here as well. Um, estimated funding, um, five million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-six. Um, increasing the number of school counselors to ensure capacity at every school all the way through the school system. I did about uh bringing the counseling work to to all students, but also um, rude, really cool idea that 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 uh that we're working with uh uh on an RFP four, which is this counseling beyond school hours. And uh, this is, we know many of our students have um questions, concerns, have fastfire questions, uh counseling concerns, um, um, college application question that they're usually asking those questions like at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night, and nobody's there to answer those questions because um, the school day ends for most of our counselors by two thirty. So um, working uh to access counseling beyond school hours, whether it be our school counselors or an organization that has established reputation in this area, uh, would be important for us to offer students uh beyond the 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 typical seven to two-thirty timeframe. Uh, we're also excited to offer that professional learning. I think in ESER II, we have a social, emotional learning curriculum uh in ESER II, and then we're going to continue offering professional learning for our staff in that social, emotional learning. Uh, here we also have mentors, mentors for staff, mentors for students embedded into this. And then um one of the bigger chunks here is also a multi-tiered support system for pupil services and special education. And so uh really beefing up our ability to pro- provide uh staffing and support for students um as their needs have continued to grow, especially through the pandemic for our students. Um, making sure that we have a multi-tiered system with support uh uh for students outlined and having uh just not just the program, but the staff available to to do that.
The next one is the uh remote learning, uh, staff development, and the digital divide. Um, we we've certainly experienced what that felt like during the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. Uh, we believe that the remote learning, of course, the staff development, and the digital divide is something we're going to be laser-focused on. We do have a one-to-one implementation in the district, and we want to continue that. Um, in uh this particular priority, we uh recommending or suggesting as a draft for a board discussion, eleven million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars, that will help us to not only remain in active mode to provide the um resources. Remain in active mode to provide the resources for enhanced technological learning. But also we want to invest in teacher recruitment and retention. You know, we we do our challenge when surrounding districts can do more than Waterbury. So we want to make certain that teacher recruitment and retention is something that we not only have in our strategic plan, but we place this. In the A R P S R. And that we continue to provide equity training, it's ongoing, that we have staff. Incentives to cross endorse, we do, we do that, we want to continue to do that and be more robust in our delivery of those. Services. We want to invest in the technology for teaching and learning, that's not only providing the. And teachers, but also how how do they use it? When technology literally continues to advance on a regular basis. Teaching people so that they can be comfortable utilizing a tool that is going to be forever changing. The teacher sign on bonuses that we want to implement so that we could recruit. The teacher side bonuses for hard to fill positions. We are at a at a critical point in our district where there are some positions that have been vacant for a very long time. And we need to be competitive with surrounding districts. So providing the teacher sign on bonuses for those hard to fill positions. Not only brings the teacher to the table in Waterbury, but it provides what our students have been asking for. All of the courses that students ask for, if we're not able to provide teachers for them, then it's a good idea, but we don't have a plan for making it happen. So the teacher sign on bonuses are intended to be able to recruit teachers. To teach in Waterbury in hard to fill positions. Likewise, we recognize that our current staff also. Should be in in programs that help them to be able to continue to grow and to develop and that we pour in. To our existing staff and developing a teacher leader academy. And developing a badging system for professional learning whereby teachers and support staff can. Also be incentivized for continuing to work in Waterbury while we invest. Invest in their professional growth and development is very important. And that we continue to aim for a diverse workforce recruitment and and retention. And that in within this particular priority four, we believe that those highlights encompasses many of the ideas and recommendations that we've heard. That we were never able to really afford and to go into very deeply to make those happen. That I believe that through A R P S R, we are able to do that.
So. Priority five is building safe and healthy schools. Continuous improvement on existing structure. We've estimated. Around fifty five million one hundred and forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. And the highlights in this area are school based needs, so. This is giving the chance for principals and their school community and their staff. To be able to to. Point out what it is that they need at their schools that maybe they haven't gotten that we truly need, that is very hard for us. To fund for them in our operating budget. And it's giving them a voice here of what they think their school needs to exceed. So that's a line item that we have in in this section. Also furniture, furniture fixtures, equipment, F F N E. You know, we want a classroom conducive to learning and some of our schools don't have the proper furniture needed. You know, if you're not a school that receives maybe additional grant funding. You know, it's it's hard for us again to budget and 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 be able to furnish a classroom. So this is also giving, especially some of our older elementary schools, a chance. To get new furniture into the classroom and to make it more inviting for learning. So that's going to be also a line item in this section. Again, this facilities repair. And any restoration and renovations. We heard Slam earlier discussing the facilities. Study and and the projects that we plan to be doing off of that. This would be a continuation of an amount that we have budgeted in S R two. And being able to receive the S R funding, we could really expand a lot more on this. In the ventilation and HVAC areas. You know, for whether, you know. Obviously through COVID and and to have a good air quality. So, you know, the facility repairs, renovations, restoration, ventilation and HVAC is a big number in in this section. We also are going to be doing some playground improvements. I think it will be one school though receiving a new playground because they haven't had it. And then some of our other elementary schools who haven't had the chance to have their playground upgraded. This would be in this section. Of course, with with all of the study. On facilities and repairs and renovations in the HVAC. This grant does allow for administrative costs. So you'll see that we have a project manager, a project manager to see us through the duration of these big, large projects. That we'll be doing for HVAC and and renovations. And we do need a project manager and it is allowable expense in S R. For that, so we budgeted for a project manager here and some other administrative costs. You know, we would need like more help, obviously in the finance department to help monitor the funding. We would also need more administrative help. For help to assist purchasing with many of the RFPs and bids as well as helping our legal counsel. Or counsel, having some outside counsel helping with the contracts. Because there'll be a multitude of contracts with all the funding that we have in all of our S R. Grants that we receive from one, two, and this S R R. So those are the big items and highlights in this funding. Section.
Darren, you want to take that?
Yes, so I mentioned earlier, twenty percent of the total budget, which would be seventeen million nine hundred thirty eight thousand two hundred thirty five dollars and twenty cents. Would need to be allocated to learning loss. And as you can see, we've we've hit that mark and I've gone over a little bit. To ensure that we are, we are addressing the learning loss that has occurred for our students.
I'm going to go over the next few slides very quickly, but they're still very important and we should, they should not be set aside as unimportant. Because they connect to the work that we were doing, we are doing, and we will be doing for multiple years. Is that we, you know, we have that recommitment to reimagine and think type overview. We 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 had multiple teams of people working in committees as well as in community forum, town halls. And we will continue to do that, but we took the voices of people over many, many, many months to be able to apply what. Our our students and everyone has said and apply it to this very complex work of writing. A a an application grant for something that we believe could change the future of Waterbury. We did solicit community input through thought exchange, through surveys. Open meetings, subcommittees, and we will continue to do so. Because we believe the voice of the community, certainly the voice of the board. The families, the students, the teachers, the support staff and everyone that has. A deep desire to see Waterbury become the very best that it can be. Has to be heard in a way that we can not only do this work, but we can sustain this work after this money goes away in twenty twenty four. Additionally, these are samples of some of the meetings that we've had. And the the collective thoughts that have been gathered. And and we actually started town halls along and community meetings and forums a long time before twenty twenty. So you're just seeing some of the ones that occurred in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. But there were many needs in our district that. Were identified early on that people may see embedded within S R two and certainly embedded within A R P S. So all of these community meetings that you're seeing. You know, they came with a lot of information and feedback from. Many people and we have numbers to be able to support that. The next slide was that we're not just trying to put together and piece together a lot of things, we want coherence. Because you can have a lot of great ideas, but they don't connect to anything. And so we we know that we've had issues with coherence and coherence of programs and projects. So we want this to be meaningful work that we can not only put on a piece of paper, we want to see it to the very end. You know, we did draft a a theory of action. Repeatedly, our students as well as our staff will refer to the portrait of a graduate. We know that this work is meaningful to us in Waterbury. So if we fully support the implementation of the portrait of a graduate. Then student outcomes will improve across a range of more equitable measures. Supported by coherent systems. And we are working very hard to try to do that in an ever changing environment. Again, some of the work that we will do moving forward, focusing on the instructional core. We want to be reflective about what we do, we wanted to make a difference. We want to transform our system. And and we believe that A R P S R and our strategic plan. And our focus on portrait of a graduate, teaching and learning, family and community engagement, talent management and fiscal responsibility. Will be something that is is. Going to be laser focused for us as we move forward. Again, our very last slide will will show you that we want to educate the whole child. We want to expand access, choice and equity across our system. We want to ensure safe, healthy schools and tools for learning and we want to prepare for the future. I will stop there and this, all of this with your feedback tonight and throughout the week. And our community forum, our webinar that is scheduled for August the ninth and August tenth. So we can engage with our our families, community, teachers, staff, everyone who has a vested interest in making Waterbury better. This will be posted on our website, we will introduce it and any ideas and recommendations that we continue to get. We've also sought and continue to seek input from Waterbury voices. And we will continue to have the collaboratives because I believe that people should see. Within some of these recommendations or suggestions and how we budgeted for that. That the voices of our board as well as our community have been heard. And so when we go out with the community, what the webinars on August the ninth and August the tenth. We continue to get feedback, we continue to take input, we revise it. All of this will be written into. Into the grant application, which will be submitted online on August sixteenth. After it has been submitted, after it gets approval, it will, it's a public document, it will be seen by everyone. And you could see individual line items to see how this money will be spent. And also, we will have to develop structures in house to monitor the progress on the spending, the implementation and the outcomes.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, Darren, Doreen. Any comments or questions on on the presentation? Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. One quick question, I mean, the the section with the, you know, the HVAC to appears to the school. Is that something that we're going to be waiting for Slam to give us the recommendations?
We're not waiting on on the all of the recommendations from Slam to be able to start. For example, we know that we have some projects right now that if we don't address right now, we we won't be able to 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 go on. So we're not going to wait for the entire study to be able to do some of that critical work when we know it has to be done. Because we won't have another alternative. And we're engaging with some of the consultants, I know that, you know, we 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 have. Some consultancy that we've been working with, so when we have a top high priority. Repair that we have to make or replacement that we have to make, we're doing that. And then, of course, as Slam will finish their reports. If there's something that's high on their priority list that we know we have to do, we won't wait. Because we of the strict timeline that we have to spend the funding from this A R P S.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
I remember that when we were doing the discussions with Slam originally that we would think their their recommendations as we go instead of waiting for the plan. That's that's I'm glad we're going to be doing that, thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, anyone else have a question or comment, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up.
Yeah, very quickly, thank you, Mr. President. Lot to take in. I don't recall seeing. This presentation or in basket, did we receive a copy of this?
I'm sorry, I I didn't understand the question.
Did we receive a copy of this in the email? The copy of the presentation?
No, you did not.
Okay, if we can, because it was the last to take in, okay. Yeah, so my questions may be coming later, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone, Commissioner Harvey, is your hand up?
Yes, President McConnell, quickly. Dr. Ruffin, as you were going through this, and and thank you, Commissioner Van Stone, because I was going to ask if we could. Get a copy of the presentation, but I I think I'll wait and and receive that copy. But I was hoping, as you're going through the presentation, I understand this is not final, but I was hoping for like a graph. That would indicate the percentage, you know, with the money and the different categories of, you know, where. The that outlines the percentage of the money that's going like in a pie form of where this money is going towards. So I I just, let let me see it, you know, visual, let me see it. And then I think that would help our communities as well to see what percentage is going towards, you know, learning loss. So what percentage is going towards family or things like that, so that's just a suggestion. So I'll wait till you send that to us and then I'll make further comments. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, anyone else have a question before we wrap up this section?
Well, thank you, Commissioner. So what I would like to do is I will send it to you. I would like to, you know, schedule some informal time, not in a regular meeting, to be able to discuss it with individual board members. I would like for, because because I feel uncomfortable putting anything in a pie chart right now because it's not final, not final till you say so. And so until we get input from the community as well. But but I will send all of this to you. And I would like to have some individual meetings or small group meetings, not a full meeting, you know, with the full board. And then I would like the same opportunity with some of the community members and all of the community invited to the webinars. But we will be conducting other other opportunities to be able to discuss. For instance, for the principals and that have gathered some input. Hopefully with their teachers, support staff and everyone on their campus to know. What would best meet the needs of our campus, especially if you remember, there was always an equity issue. That some schools had more than others, some had grants, some didn't. And so now it's an opportunity to level that playing field. And based on the the, and we've heard a number of times, you know, teachers are saying, I don't have this, I have to buy this. Well, that should not, that should no longer be. So but we need to know what this is. And and we're expecting to receive that from the principals that were asked to have collaborative meetings with their staff. To be able to determine, so what does this look like for you to be able to best manage your school? And then after we get the feedback, you know, our team is going to go back to work because this has to be written in narrative form. Inside of E grants.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any other last questions or comments? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, President McConnell, just a quick comment, yeah, whenever that pie chart, I think that would be very helpful. And I understand that you don't put something together like that right now. But I think in the in the final presentation, I think a pie chart would be very helpful for those who can see. Exactly how worth that money is being used, so that, thank you, President Stone, thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you.
Any other last questions or comments before we move on? All right, Dr. Ruffin, Darren, Doreen, thank you very much. Look forward to getting that copy so I could study it myself also, it's a little bit too much to get and coming out of the gate blindly. Our next agenda item, I don't think he's on the horn anymore. Zuda had a cutoff, something about his computer screwed up. So items eleven and twelve. Anybody else taking for Zuda?
I can relay any questions to him.
Okay, why, I I don't know what he had planned, so. Okay, why, I, I don't know what he had planned, so. If I see anything or if anyone has any, please, uh, pass them on to, uh, Doreen. Was that you?
Yeah, it was, it was me, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Item number 11 is, is just the use of school facilities by school organizations and our city departments. It's attached to the agenda. And item number 12 is his use of facilities by outside organizations and our waiver requests, and that's attached to the agenda as well. That's all he would have said.
Okay. Uh, any comments or questions? Beautiful. Hearing none. We are now at Item 13, the Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Dr. Ruffin, anything you want to add?
No, sir, it's all there.
Thank you. We are now at Item Benito for this agenda. We are now going to go into executive session. And, uh, Commissioner Rocco Orso. At this time, we need an executive session. Uh, Doctor, who will be joining us in the executive session?
Uh, Juan Mendoza will be joining as well as Tara Shaw on the, on, uh, the telephone.
Thank you. Uh, Rocco, can you, uh, tee up motion, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm moved to convening into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments before we go? All right, everyone, thank you. We will be going into executive session. And I believe you said Tara and Juan Mendoza will be joining us, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I will, uh, get everybody into the proper framework here, and don't hold your breath. We are returning from our executive session. Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
I'm moved to return to the regular order of business with the record reflecting no votes were taken.
May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Please signify if you're in agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The motion carries because the ayes have it. We are back.
Make the motion adjourned.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Please signify if you're in agreement that, uh, we are good to go by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We are now moving into a special meeting, correct?
Correct. Go right into it.
Everyone, welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Special Meeting for Thursday, August 5th. Uh, we will start off with our silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything to add on to that?
I did not, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are in a silent prayer and we'll be right back. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, since you did such a great job on the earlier part of our show and tell, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Of course, of course. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Commissioner Juanita Hernandez.
You're so welcome, President McConnell.
Would, uh, Clerk Carrie Swain kindly do the roll call?
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Van Stone?
Present.
President Pagano?
Present and accounted for. Thank you very much. Commissioner Charles Stango, the Committee on School Personnel, you have the floor.
Mr. President, Item 4.1, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Ivan Hernandez as Elementary Vice Principal, Chase School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to say any words?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, and, uh, Commissioners. Uh, I am pleased to, um, bring to you Ivan Hernandez and recommend him as the, uh, Vice Principal at Chase. Um, he was very enthusiastic and excited about taking on the assignment, and I believe that he's going to do an excellent job with Chase, working with the staff and the principal, the other Assistant Principal who is at Chase. And I think that he is going to do a stellar job. He will be dearly missed at his school, Carrington. But I think he brings, um, great, uh, energy to the district and will be an asset at Chase School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Anybody else?
He is also on, on, online.
I'm looking at him right now. Hello, Ivan, how are you? Um, anyone else have any questions or comments to add to this discussion? All right, I guess we now do a vote and then we can let Ivan do his, uh, his two minutes of stardom. Is that correct, Carrie?
We need a roll call, Chuck.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry. Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
He gets to do his thing if we vote him in, yes.
President Pagano?
An enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ivan. Welcome. And you, the floor is yours if you'd like to say a few words.
Uh, yeah, I thank you all for, uh, giving me this opportunity. Um, you know, as, as, uh, Dr. Ruffin said, I am very excited about this. I've been teaching in Waterbury for 20 years, and I look forward to, uh, stepping into the, uh, office and, and looking at it from the other end and helping to keep, uh, improving library of the school system. So, thank you for the opportunity and hopefully I, I won't disappoint.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Ivan. Hope to see at Barnes and Noble more often on Sunday mornings. Um, Commissioner Charles Stango, we return to our regularly scheduled program. You.
Mr. President, Item Number 4.2, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Mallory Brito as the Elementary Vice Principal, Dreg School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Commissioner Stango, thank you for the second. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to add any words?
I would. Uh, it's an honor and pleasure to recommend Mallory Brito, uh, as the Assistant Principal, Vice Principal at Dreg School. Uh, Mallory, again, very equipped and very enthusiastic, um, brings a lot of talent, worked in turnaround, uh, work, has done some turnaround work, uh, at North End, and will continue to be an asset as a, a Vice Principal at Dreg. So, it's with enthusiasm that I recognize and recommend a highly enthusiastic person. Lots of energy, great, great teams.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to say before we take our roll call? Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Another enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Ms. Brito. And, uh, why don't you say a few words? Unmute yourself. Very good.
I appreciate the opportunity and I'm ready to get to work, and I can't wait to hit out of the park for you guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We're here to support you. Let us know how we can help. Congratulations. Commissioner Charles Stango, you're back to regularly scheduled programming.
Alrighty, Mr. President, Item 4.3, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Kimberly Rock as the Elementary Vice Principal of Reed School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to add any words?
Absolutely. I, I, it's, uh, again, with a lot of enthusiasm and excitement that I recommend, uh, Kimberly Rock as the Vice Principal at Reed. Um, she, she is energetic, she's worked at Reed, and she brings in a lot of the vision that aligns with where Reed is headed. And I'm excited about her being chosen as the Assistant Principal there. Uh, and, and I, and, and actually, I think she interviewed, um, on her honeymoon. So, I mean, my goodness, uh, her dedication is clearly there. So, I, I really, uh, am excited about recommending her for VP at Reed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Hope you had a good time. Yes.
Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Another enthusiastic yes.
Another unanimous.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Rock, congratulations. The floor is yours if you'd like to say a few words to this group.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Dr. Ruffin and President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, as well as Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Schwartz, uh, for this position. I've been at Reed for the last eight years, so I'm excited to kind of leave the classroom and go into the VP role and kind of continue the work that's been started there. So, I'm really excited.
Thank you very much and congratulations from all of us. Commissioner Charles Stango, back to regularly scheduled programming.
Alrighty, Mr. President, Item Number 4.4, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the appointment of Ann Drury as the Elementary Vice Principal of Wendell Cross School, effective August 16th, 2021, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Dr. Ruffin, any comments or, uh, whatever you want to add to the equation?
I do. Ann comes again, highly recommended. Uh, I, you know, she has a real passion for what goes on in the classroom, and I think that her dedication to being, uh, working with, uh, uh, Donna and, and opening a new school is, is certainly there. I think that she is going to be a great asset to the school, and I look forward to great things from her. Uh, again, she's very enthusiastic, works at, uh, at Maloney. And, uh, and so, this is a highly recommended, uh, uh, appointment, uh, as well. And I'm excited for her and for us.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call vote?
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
An enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Welcome to the club. The floor is yours. We'd love to hear from you.
I just want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity. Um, I've been with the Waterbury Public Schools for 27 years, enjoyed every minute of it, and I'm so looking forward to working with the Wendell Cross community to open this beautiful school. And I want to thank you again for this great opportunity.
Thank you very much and congratulations from all of us.
Thank you.
Yay. Commissioner Charles Stango, your last, uh, commercial free hour.
Last one, Mr. President, Item Number 4.5, the Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the job specifications for and new position of Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, we need a second.
I'll second. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Yes, I, I, I want to say that when we were in a position of not having technology across the school system, this position was still one that would be needed because it was how to integrate technology with the tools that we had at the time. Uh, after March 13th of 2020, it became an absolute necessity that, that we engage in, I, I call it putting your money where your mouth is, uh, because we, we were challenged to be able to integrate technology and not only integrated, but actually use it, uh, as a tool for furthering learning for our, our teachers and for our students. So, I think that with the reopening of school, uh, the way that we're reopening school and knowing that we're moving towards innovative technology for the, for the duration of, of our school system, I think it's critically important that we, uh, we strategically place staff to be able to help teachers and to help staff develop, uh, with a requirement that we now have that everyone becomes proficient in utilizing technology for teaching and learning. So, I, 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 I'm excited about the possibility of this position. I, I hope the board approves it. But that's my position on why this position is critically important as we not only say we're going to do something, but we add the supports for our teachers to be able to, to be able to actually do it.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any questions or comments before we take a vote? Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno and then Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Dr. Ruffin, I, I, I agree with you. Um, even though I always think about, you know, trying to be able to maintain teachers in our district, but have you thought about having the Alliance Fund cover this tech, uh, technology supervising position? Or is that not allowable?
I couldn't tell you today where the funding source is. I know that it, I know that we, uh, we can certainly, uh, budget for it, but I can't tell you that it couldn't be because I, I don't know where all of the other supervisors are currently funded.
Okay, thank you.
If I may jump in, if I'm, if I may jump in, it's, it's funded in the Alliance Grant.
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Darren.
Commissioner Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, you know, I had my, uh, my comments earlier this evening in workshop, um, with my opposition to this program. Um, being paid for by Alliance is actually part of, um, you know, my disagreement with it. Uh, you know, Alliance can be looked at for many things. Years ago, it could not be. Uh, the rules have loosened up, um, over the years. Um, you know, and, but basic premise is anything for improvement of your, your school, uh, which is pretty much everything we do every day. But, um, you know, I just, uh, I'm, I'm struggling with another administrative position, other supervisory position, uh, when we really need, uh, even if we were to use Alliance or, uh, maybe so many other grants that are coming down the road and, um, and try to come back and, and take care of some of those 25, 30 special ed jobs that we need to fill or, um, any of the 170 that are listed in the, uh, the budget coming forward. So, um, I'm not going to be, be able to be in favor of this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have some? Commissioner Karen Harvey? Can't hear.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm here. I got you. I, I am not sure about this position and I, you know, I just, when, when, when I think about it and the positions that we have open, and then we're creating a new position and seeing how we did, yeah, we struggled. We struggled in 2020, but we made it. And so, um, I don't know, I'm just really kind of struggling with this. So, I'm not really sure if I'm going to support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Amanda Nardozzi?
Um, I, I also have that same thought. Um, I, I'm concerned about the amount of positions that Um, I, I'm concerned about the amount of positions that we have open currently that we're unable to fill. Um, I think our students would be better suited having, um, teachers in place rather than supervisors. Um, so again, I'm, at this point, I don't know as if I'm going to be able to support it either.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Nardozzi. Anybody else have any last, Commissioner Adorno?
I'm sorry, just thinking about this because I, I think we all have the same concerns, but Darren, it, is it that we're just having trouble filling those? Like, teachers are not, are applying for those positions, correct? It's not that, because that was my concern as well, that I'd rather try to fill these positions, but we're really struggling and trying to get teachers to even apply or fill those positions. Is, is that accurate to say?
Yeah, this is not a replacement of any teaching position at all. This is a person to support teachers when we bring them in in the development of their use of technology in the classroom. And so it does not replace teachers, it's an addition, and it's our ability to be able to, to, to utilize that technology across the district and having a focus on it. Probably the person, the supervisor, that would have the most, um, most oversight of the most funding in the entire district.
Especially after Mr. Marotti was talking to us about all the new trades and stuff that's been going on. That, that's why I am considering and, and allowing this as long as we know that the budget to fund these vacancies is still going to be there. I think that's where a lot of people had their doubts, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. It, yeah, there was no, there was no, uh, trading in a teaching position or teaching positions to get this. The teaching positions we have are posted, and we're, 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 we're trying to fill them. It's not a, it's not a replacement, and if anything, it's a support of.
Thank you, thank you.
But this is not a vote for filling a position, this is a vote for approving a job description, correct?
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Um.
President Pagano?
Hold on one minute, Commissioner Juanita Hernandez has been waving her hand.
Well, I, I, I'm in favor of this, um, only because right now, technology, we're, we're, we're all over the chart with it, and it's a huge investment, um, we are making to make sure that our teachers and our students are, are able to use the technology in, in the way that, which we want to try to go. Um, so I will be in favor of it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we all have individual, our own individual votes, and, and I just want to restate that I, I'm just a little, you know, unclear with this, um, um, position, creating this position, this new position. Um, and so that's why I said at this time, I cannot support it. So I just wanted to just make that clear. We all have our own individual votes and all reasoning why we are not going to vote or, or will vote for this, so I just want to make that.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand up, and then Commissioner Charles Stango.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, I just want to make it clear, I, I was not making any, uh, remarks towards this being, you know, a replacement of any type of job. Um, I was not confused in the least. I was making a comparison of how we use Alliance money. I have no, no confusion whatsoever that this is any connection to any job. This is a new position, I'm fully aware of that. So I just want to make sure what I stated is understood correctly. I was not making any comparison there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Stango, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just feel that we have been saying for a while now that we need to reimagine, we need to redesign, we need to move forward into the next, the next thing that we're doing here, we don't know what's coming up. We need some people to straighten out and be on top of this technology stuff. And so therefore, I think the time is now, and I will be supporting it.
Okay, let me throw out another option, do we want to table this for a future discussion? While we digest it?
That might be in, in order, I know if I'd had a little bit more time to, uh, I was not able to make the personnel committee meeting, but that might be a possibility. I would not consider that.
If, if I may, before, Mr. President, um, I, I don't see any reason not to take a vote on that. You know, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else have a discussion, Commissioner Orso?
Couple of things, just, just to, uh, just to clarify myself. Will's position is to make sure that the technology works. And this new position is to make sure that the, the teachers know how to use the technology and the teaching, a, and, you know, teachers are paid to teach, and I mean, and sometimes the technology, they need a little bit more instructions on technology. Um, so I mean, a, am I correct in that assumption that Will does make sure it works, and this person is going to be teaching the teachers? You know, and, and a lot of them, you know, it's, you know, even some of the older teachers, a, a, and, and even the younger ones, I mean, they might not know about the technology, and everything changes from day to day, you know, with your iPhones or phones, it changes every other week. You know, so I, I think I'll be supporting this, thanks.
Okay, then I don't think we need to put it off, I think we can take a vote if I'm hearing everybody correctly.
I think it should be roll call, Chuck.
Yep, um. Carrie, would you kindly do a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
No.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
No.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Five-three, motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for a very energetic discussion and meeting. It was good to see everybody. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Anybody want to discuss it, or are we all getting ready to get out of here and go to bed?
We are going to bed right now.
All right, Karen, you look tired, kid.
I'm, I'm worn.
All right. Guys, thank you very much, we are officially adjourned, have a great couple of weeks until we meet again.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone, stay safe, congratulations.